Hello, I'm Melissa Batinzi. Welcome to the Pembroke School Committee Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. Today Susan Ballinger will be interviewed. Susan will have two minutes to introduce herself, speak about her background, qualifications, and why she's running for office. I'll then ask a series of questions related to school issues. Susan will be hearing them for the first time during this forum. She'll have two minutes to answer the questions. After the questions, she'll have two minutes for a closing remark. The two-minute timeframe will be shown on the screen for her to see. Let's get started with the opening statement. Susan, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Susan Ballinger and I'm a candidate for the Pembroke School Committee. I was born and raised in the town of Pembroke and I graduated from the Silver Lake School District. My husband Paris and I decided to move back here with our family in 2009. It was the best decision we ever made. I love this town. Paris and I are a blended family of seven children. I have three grown stepdaughters and I have four children of my own, three of whom have already graduated from Pembroke Public Schools. My oldest son Ben is a graduate student at the University of Illinois studying physics. My son Zach is a vocal performance major at the University of Hartford. And my son Will attends UMass Lowell and is studying physics. My youngest daughter Taya is a seventh grader at the Pembroke Community Middle School. My three oldest children had a great experience at Pembroke Public Schools. When my boys attended, there were many well-thought-out programs in place for all of their needs. My oldest really thrived taking the wide selection of AP courses that Pembroke offers. It earned him a full year of college credits. My middle son absolutely loved the performing arts program at Pembroke Public Schools. He participated in band, chorus, and every play offered for all four years of high school. And my younger son Will enjoyed cross-country and track and participated in many Patriot League events. Well, it sounds as though I'm bragging about the successes of my kids, but in all reality, we had a rocky beginning. We had a lot of issues and needed to lean on school support for many of them in order to overcome these obstacles. Early on, my kids needed 504 plans for chronic illnesses, IEPs for ADHD, and other issues. It's because of the support of the school system that my kids are where they are today. The previous school committee members and the administration worked so well together that they were able to create a collaborative atmosphere that allowed my kids to thrive in this community. I'd like to continue this tradition for the future of Pembroke, knowing how much it meant to my family as my oldest kids were growing. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So we're going to reset the clock and we're going to go to question one. As you know, over the past year, the school districts have had to drastically change course and adapt due to the effects of COVID-19 on our communities. Is there anything you would have done differently in response? You have two minutes.
Well, that's a great question. I'm not sure that I would have done differently. I mean, I feel like everybody's sort of done the best they can. And, you know, I just feel like, you know, so many families have been struggling throughout this pandemic, you know, job loss, family and friends who've been ill, who have died. And families have had to figure out how to juggle childcare and still be able to work. You know, for me, I think the most important thing is how we're going to move forward. You know, the social-emotional piece is going to be very important moving forward. As a district, I believe we need to, you know, be sure to have systems in place to help these kids who will be struggling over the next year or two. Not only are we going to have to deal with a lot of catching up for students who didn't have a lot of resources, but, you know, the social issues are pretty big for all of these kids as well. These kids have been cooped up in their home for a year, learning how to use Zoom, FaceTime, and let's face it, you know, house party and social media apps to connect with their peers. In many cases, parents haven't been able to supervise their kids. And so I think what we're going to have to do is come up with a way to supervise their kids in their education process because they're working themselves. So we're going to have to find a way to catch these kids up and get them back on track. I just feel like this is more important than ever.
Thank you. We're going to move on to question two. What is the one thing you think that residents should understand about managing the school budget? You have two minutes.
Okay, great. So about managing the school budget, you know, I think that, you know, it's really important that when the town is trying to figure out, you know, every year it seems like we're coming up with, trying to solve for the budget. And it's very important for them to come up with, the administration to come up with alternate solutions to fix these difficult problems of budget areas so that we don't have to, you know, cut teachers' jobs. And so, you know, moving forward, I feel like we need to come together as a town to figure out how we can overcome the budget deficits in the future. We need a long-term plan. Our schools are the most important asset of our town, in my opinion. And I feel that people move to Pembroke because they love the schools and what they have to offer. And so, you know, it's really what keeps our town strong. And it's an investment in our community. So we need to find a way to make the budget work. And, you know, we need to, you know, continue the tradition of strong programming for our children. My goal as a school committee member is to ensure that children are put first in this community. My hope is that we never have to say no to something that the kids need due to budgets.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to question three. What is your vision for a student of the Pembroke Public Schools? And what skills should their education provide them for the future? You have two minutes.
Well, my vision is a well-rounded student. I really sincerely feel that all areas of education are important. You know, just because one student is really good at, you know, maybe they're just, they excel in academics and they take all the AP classes. AP classes are important, but I also feel that we need to find alternate means to teach our kids. You know, some kids aren't going to go to college. So maybe we need to sort of pivot and find, you know, other areas to teach the kids, other areas of programming, so that we have a well-rounded student and we have a well-rounded option for every student in the district. So.
Excellent. Thank you. And we're going to move to closing remarks. And you will have two minutes for your closing remarks.
Okay, great. So over the last year, I've spent many hours researching what it means to be a school committee member. I've known for a long time that I wanted to serve our town at some point. In the last year alone, I've attended approximately 99% of the school committee meetings so that I would have a better understanding of the problems Pembroke faces. I take this job very seriously. I want to represent the kids to create a collaborative atmosphere for teachers, administration, parents, and other town boards. I believe in a well-rounded education for all students. I believe we shouldn't be centrally focused on any one department. All departments and areas of education have value in my eyes. And I believe all of our current offerings at our school help make a well-rounded student. Over the next year, we're going to need to come together as a community and be laser-focused on helping our students recover from the losses in both academics and social opportunities. These kids have missed out on so many things, including proms, sports, plays, musical opportunities, and after-school clubs and more. And that's just the social piece. Our incredible teachers have obviously done the best they could with the situation, but there's no way around the fact that many of these kids are going to need to play catch-up academically. My hope is that we can come together and work collaboratively with administration and teachers to come up with a plan to get back on track. I would be honored to be part of the solution to work as a representative for families in the town of Pembroke. My goal is to see a strong school that takes into account all of the social-emotional needs of our students and create a well-rounded education moving forward. May 15th is just around the corner and I would really appreciate your vote. I'm looking forward to working for our kids and thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan, for participating in the interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. So let's get started with the opening statement. And James, you have two minutes.
Hello to Pembroke voters. My name is James Quigley, an eight-year Pembroke resident. I moved here with my wife Carolyn. Her maiden name's McPhillips. She grew up in this town, Pembroke. And my two daughters, Emma Quigley, who is an eighth grader at Pembroke Middle School, and my youngest daughter, Abigail, who's a fifth grader at Hobymark Elementary School. We live on Monroe Street with my in-laws, David and Julie McPhillips. David is actually a veterans agent here in town. And, you know, I have both professional, I'm sorry, private and public sector experience. I spent almost 15 years within, working in the government, both at the county level with the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office and at the federal level as Congressman Keating's deputy district director. Right now, I work in a public relations consulting firm. And I also do some government consulting. The reason why I jumped into this race is just the moment in time that we're in. Right now, we're currently at an unprecedented moment. Where over 550,000 American lives were lost to a pandemic. And as far as education goes, we've never been in a position where our students have lost this much learning time. We've had economic crises where you had social, mental, socioeconomic issues and mental health issues that came along with it, but we've never had this much loss of learning. And as we proceed to go back into a full in-person model for schooling, I don't think we quite know yet what challenges many of our students are facing, what they've had to deal with in the last year, trauma they may have faced, stress they may have faced, and how that's going to affect them going forward. So I desperately want to be part of the process to help and be there for them.
Thank you, Jim. So we're going to move on to question one. Given what we've learned and experienced over the past year, is there anything you would have done differently relating to the schools? And you'll have two minutes.
That's a great question. And I think it's easy to sit here and with hindsight to say, okay, what we know now is that transmission in school has been pretty low. And maybe we could have gotten to a full person return earlier. But at the time, what we knew about the disease and how it was transmitted and the consequences of it continued to change. I mean, early on, there was, you know, there was a belief that we didn't need to wear masks. And then when we learned more about the disease, we did wear masks. We also, you know, have teachers that were at a high-risk situation. So asking them to go in earlier before we had a vaccine probably wasn't appropriate. And I mean, you don't have to look much further than, you know, what the numbers were in their early childhood field, especially as when we had surges. If you looked at the state website every day, those numbers went up and up. And God bless those women who went to work. So people, our first responders and others could get to work every day, grocery store workers. But they were right at high-risk situations. And teachers that would have taught Kate through 200 would have been in similar situations that they were in. So in hindsight, it'd be easy to say, we know the transmission was low and maybe we should have brought the schools back earlier. But I don't think we could go back and say that should have happened then. I will say, the one thing that has happened is Pembroke decided not to be part of the pool testing that's awful by the Commonwealth. And I do think now that it's been extended and the Commonwealth is going to pay for it throughout the entire year because of the federal funding, the robust funding that it has come. Pembroke still has the opportunity to jump into that pool testing. And I think that's a way to keep kids in the classroom and to recognize when there are infections and be able to pull those students out before it spreads further.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our second question. What is the one thing you think that residents should understand about managing the school budget? You'll have two minutes.
Well, it's the largest piece of the budget in town. And, you know, chapter 70 funding is a difficult thing to understand. But I think the simplest way to put it is because our enrollment hasn't gone up over the past few years, we've kind of flatlined on the funding that we're getting from the state. And as more services are needed for our students and as infrastructure gets older, as we do have here in town, costs continue to go up. So spending about $33 million school budget, we're actually still in a deficit. You know, at the last school committee meeting, they talked about how they needed to make up a gap. I believe it was close to $200,000 of a deficit going into this year. And one of the tough decisions they had to make is they voted to actually raise the fees on the buses, transportation for families, that will be going up. Raise the fees on athletics and raise the fees on, for the first time ever, on clubs, which the first club will be free. But after that, I believe it's a $20, $5 fee for each additional club, which I don't agree with. But that's what they, and raise the, and to charge a parking fee for students going to the school. So it's a huge budget, but more is needed. And more is going to be needed because we're making up some of that budget deficit with the federal funds that have come in from each of the stimulus. So as we go year after year, we're going to have to find new sources of revenue just to stay status quo, never mind to bring in new programs and maybe rebuild or build new infrastructure for our schools.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim. And we're going to move on to our last question now. Question three, which is, what is your vision for a student of the Pembroke Public Schools? And what skills should their education provide them for the future? And you'll have two minutes for this question also.
So my vision for the Pembroke Public Schools is that each student has an equitable opportunity to succeed, that we give as much effort and energy and attention to the student that's in IRP classes, but also the students that have interests in other fields, whether that's technical or graphic design or, you know, or they have, you know, maybe their goal is to go into the military after school. We need to be able to provide for each and every family and to meet their goals. And, you know, I think what this pandemic is going to really shine a light on is that those families that don't have as much resources at home, things are going to get much more difficult. We have a food insecurity issue here in town that people may not be aware of. The food pantry does a good job of ensuring that families that need our resources get it. But, you know, that's just going to grow from this pandemic. We have issues around social justice. And that doesn't only relate to issues around race. That relates to issues around income and gender and religious issues. And how do we make sure all those families and students not only feel welcome, but get the services and the attention they need so they can have a full-rounded education? You know, these clubs that are offered at the middle school and high school are key. You know, those bring kids into the school community. They make them feel a part of things. You know, the really, the Pembroke Public Schools have done a really good job of creating clubs to fit, you know, whatever students' wants and desires are. And coming off the pandemic, you know, I mentioned raising, including fees for those. I worry that that might have students step back and not get involved in those. So I'd like to see that continue, but without the fees.
And Jim, that's your two minutes.
Okay.
Sorry. But we are going to move on to closing statements and closing remarks. So you'll have two minutes for that now as well.
Sure, thank you. First off, I think this is important. Town election, and I'm taken away a little bit from my closing remarks, but the town election has been changed from May 15th to June 26th. This happened last night at the select board meeting. I know many families are anxious to get out there and enjoy the sun. And it's going to be a Saturday, really the first Saturday in summer after school. So I'm going to ask and I'm going to plead with Pembroke voters right now, whether you vote for me or not, to make a plan to vote. Whether that's going to be the early vote, a vote by mail. Don't assume you're going to vote on that Saturday because it could be 85 degrees and you're going to say, let's go to the beach. And you're going to come home and polls are going to be closed. So make a plan, get ready to vote, whomever that is. Start thinking about that now. May 15th, I think, was a much easier day to vote due to certain circumstances. June 26th, you may already have vacation plans. So just keep that in mind. You know, growing up, I, you know, I really faced some adversity as a kid. In the neighborhood I grew up, we were kind of a poorer neighborhood in Quincy and Germantown. And, you know, I remember one instance of when my community was playing a basketball game against another community. And the referee there said, you know, despite this woman now taking over, and he used the derogatory term, meaning our basketball program. He was talking about my mother, these kids are still punks. And he said that just because of the neighborhood we were from. And he said that, used the derogatory term about my mother because she was a woman. And to this moment, that stays with me. That feeling that I was discriminated against has stayed with me. I have never been discriminated against since that point. And I just think, you know, for certain students in the situations they are in, they go through a lot more than that. And they need people and advocates in their corner to make sure they get everything they need to be successful. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, again, for participating with this interview. And we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the upcoming election. So we're going to get started with the opening statement. And Mike, you have two minutes.
Great, thank you, Melissa. And thank you to PAC TV for hosting this. I'm Mike Trappiano and I have had the pleasure of serving the people of Pembroke on the Pembroke School Committee for the past 20 years. The past two years specifically have been chairman. I am asking for your vote on, at our June 26th election. A little bit about me. My wife and I purchased our home in Pembroke 24 years ago next week and it has been home ever since. We have three children. Our daughters graduated from Pembroke High School in 2016 and 2020. I grew up next door in Hanson, graduated from BU with an undergrad in accounting and Bentley University with an MBA. I currently work for a large financial services technology firm leading growth strategy for wealth management. During my time on the committee, I've been a leader on ensuring fiscal responsibility, lobbying for the needs of our most vulnerable students, a strong supporter of our athletics, fine and practical arts programs, and also been a voice at the state level, working on the MIA Game Officials Committee and most recently their subcommittee reviewing issues around biased social justice and discriminatory practices statewide. The Pembroke Public Schools are faced with unprecedented tasks of navigating through the effects of the pandemic. As issue, I'm sorry, an issue experts believe will impact our children for many years to come. I am experienced to know that the hard work is ahead of us. Complex issues such as addressing learning loss, ensuring we meet the social and emotional needs of all learners, and positioning our graduates for the new economy are just some of the things that we'll be working with as we move forward. I look forward to using my 20 years of experience and willingness to dive deep into issues to make sure we continue to make every dollar count and the delivery of the best education the taxpayers of Pembroke can afford, collaborate to deliver programs to position our graduates to be employed in the new economy, and work to make sure that we are meeting all the needs of the children of Pembroke. I look forward to your questions and hopefully earn your vote on June 26th.
Thank you, Mike. So now we're going to move on to our questions. And question one. Given what we've learned and experienced over this past year, is there anything you would have done differently relating to the schools? You have two minutes.
Sure, absolutely. Obviously, the pandemic, we were changing things constantly. Information was coming to us rapidly and information changed dramatically. I think if we were to look back at what we know now and we knew that back on March 13th, when we made the decision to go to a fully remote, we would have still done what we did for the fully remote portion of the end of last school year. What I think we would have done differently is looked at alternative ways to provide more synchronous learning to our students. That was probably one of the biggest challenges that we saw, was having that face-to-face instruction. We also would have done things around trying to get students back even quicker. When we made the decision to go hybrid, I was one of the three votes to have us go hybrid back last August. One of the most difficult decisions I've ever made. At that time, the data was somewhat in our favor as far as going back, but it was also things we didn't know. Knowing now about whether it be social distancing, whether it be masks, whether it be the lack of school spread, we may have brought students back more frequently or for more frequent than the two days that they were in school. So we, and we would have even, last thing I'd probably mention on this, I would have gone back to school potentially earlier than we did with this April, when we brought all of our grades back. So what I would, actually, I'm sorry, this March. What I would say then, going back, is we would have kept what we did in the last school year. I would have tried to push for more synchronous learning in this school year. And we would have brought students back even sooner because we have not seen school-based spread, mainly because of some of the measures that we put in place this year. I guess, and actually, because I do have one last second, I would have tried to figure out a way for us to have more of the efforts for our seniors who are graduating and leaving our district. I really feel badly about what's happening to them and I wish we could have done more for them.
Thanks, Mike. We're going to move on to question two. What is the one thing that you think the residents should understand about managing the school budget? You have two minutes.
Sure. Pembroke School budget, right now, the budget is $35.5 million for proposal for next year. When you include nearly $3 million in CARES funding that has come into the district, you know, SRSR2, state funding, there have been a lot, there's lots of monies that come in, even add in the bulk of $3 million in grants that we receive. The first thing I want Pembroke, the taxpayer of Pembroke to understand is we are very fiscally responsible with how we spend our money. We clearly spend it as our own. Our budget right now is about 73% wages. So there's not a lot of discretionary items in there. But what we've done is we've been very creative in how we deliver services within that. We've taken an in-district approach first to things such as special education. We have a moral and fiscal responsibility to ensuring that we keep those students in district. And we've done that to try to save the taxpayers' money, but also live up to a moral obligation, which is very important to myself and the other members that I've served with over the years. The second thing I think is important to know is when we look at the dollars, we do look at it as they are our own, because they are. We are taxpayers, all five of us on the committee. So when we look at how we spend our money, we're also looking at how the long-term ramifications of that and staying within a budget. Since I've been on the committee, we have not gone to town meeting floor to look for money for the current fiscal year, which was a practice that happened many times prior to my joining the committee 20 years ago. We've communicated very well with the selectmen, or the select board, I should say, and the advisory committee. The last thing I'll mention on this is we do look at all avenues in order to make sure that we get the most out of every dollar. Whether it's negotiating contracts, depending upon the term, longer term, to get better money, a bit of contracts there. We will do everything we can whenever we're negotiating any other contracts. And we do look at how our purchasing and capital does in order to make sure we spend that money most effectively.
Great, thank you, Mike. Okay, and we're going to move on to our last question, question three. What is your vision for a student of the Pembroke Public Schools? And what skills do you think their education should provide them for the future? You have two minutes.
Sure, that's, sure, that's a really important question, something I've been talking about a lot lately. I've talked to a few business owners in town with regard to this specific item. One of the things I've said at the committee level is I don't want us to focus on what the percentage of our graduates are going on to two and four-year colleges. I think that's a, that's a stat that we get hung up on, which doesn't truly reflect the effectiveness of the district. I want us to be 100% of making sure we get the right opportunities for the students who graduate. That can be college, it could be two years, four years. It could be trade school, it could be union, it could be the military, it could be just going into the workforce at Gap Year, whatever is best for that student. And I think we should get to that. So the skills they should have, they need a lot more hands-on. We've done over the past two years, we've worked with a project called Project Lead the Way to give more hands-on or experiential learning. Actually have a meeting coming up with some business leaders in the area and our curriculum director, Mary Beth Rust, to see how we can expand our engagement in the community in order to expose students to what is out there besides what's in a traditionally, traditional school. We talked two weeks ago, a big proponent of what can we do capital-wise to position the school so that we can get more of that hands-on opportunity in the school day and also outside the school day, as I just mentioned. Within the school day, we do think there needs to be obviously a higher level of technical training, regardless of the position you go into in life. You need some type of technical training, the ability to get around with a computer, whatever it happens to be, a device. So we do look at that as pretty critical. We also look at how can we expand things such as robotics? And how can we start to look at those fine and practical arts that do have a place in the new economy? I started talking about what we're trying to do with 21st century skills. Started talking about what we're trying to do with 21st century skills. I do believe it's more hands-on or experiential learning versus traditionally what we thought of. There's obviously a role and importance of that within the district, but we still need to make sure that those hands-on skills are not lost, and especially giving vocational options.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mike. Now we're going to move on to closing remarks, and you have two minutes for those.
Great, I want to thank PAC TV again for this opportunity. Just remind everybody, I am Mike Truppiano, I'm asking for your vote on June 26th. I've been asked why to run for reelection considering my youngest graduated Pembroke High School last year. The answer is the same as it's been each of the seven times that I've been on the ballot for Pembroke School Committee. I care deeply about the town of Pembroke and the future of our children. Now more than ever, we need an experienced leader on our school committee, an experienced voice who's evolved with the times and adapted to the changes in our town, and take that experience, not to say as we've done it that way forever, we should continue to do that. That is not how I work, and that's not how I will work. I want to leverage that experience and the deep relationships that I have for the betterment, betterment of our town. One thing is for certain, the town of Pembroke will have a new member in the committee, currently excluding Jim Agnew, who's chosen not to run for reelection. The remaining members have a combined experience of serving the town of just slightly more than three years. The issues facing our district are complex and require a deep understanding of how the school district operates. As I mentioned earlier, we have a proposed budget of $35.5 million, $35.5 million in another about $6 million coming in in grant money over this next year. That requires a really disciplined approach to making sure that we're spending that taxpayers' money wisely, have demonstrated the ability to balance budgets and allow for a quality education. As I mentioned earlier, should you entrust me with your vote on June 26th, I will continue to deliver meaningful results for our community, which again includes that making sure every dollar counts in the delivery of the best education the taxpayers can afford, collaborating to deliver programs to position our graduates to be employed in the new economy, and working to make sure we meet all of the needs of the children of Pembroke. If you have questions on my qualifications, clearly reach out to me either through phone or my Facebook page, Mike Truppiano for Pembroke School Committee. And in closing, I just humbly ask for your vote on June 26th and to continue serving the town of Pembroke for the next three years.
Mike, oh, thank you, and thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. And for our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, June 26th. Thank you and good day.